If you would, remember to silence your cell phones or other devices. If you would like to speak during the public period or any other period we have during our reading of the ordinances, please fill out a speaker card. It will help us keep the record better and pronounce the name right and everything like that. All right, so let's begin this evening as we often do with a join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could now rise and join me in the plaid allegiance.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and a result of the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to abruptly pause our city council meeting and convene as the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency. So we are now sitting as the redevelopment agency. And we have just one item on the agenda, consent agenda. Does anybody on the council or the CRA wish to remove any items from consent agenda? Okay. Does anybody from the public have any comments on consent agenda items two or three for the CRA? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public comment period and a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So we please call the rule.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Randall?
Aye.
Chair Lounds?
Aye.
Okay, we have adopted the consent agenda for the CRA. Now adjourn the CRA and magically reconvene as the Mayland City Council that you all know and love. Okay. We have, first off, we have a presentation. It is Parks and Recreation Month, July 2025. So Jay, would you like to go ahead? All right, this is a proclamation by the City of Mayland, whereas the Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Mayland. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out of school time programming, youth sports, environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore I, John Lounds, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Mayland, together with the Mayland City Council, get the recognition of this event to hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. We have here the Parks and Recreation Director, Jay Cahn. And Jay, would you like to say a few words about it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate this proclamation. I wish they would have moved Parks and Recreation Month to March, but there's parks up north that are buried in free feet. I don't think our National Association would have done that for my request. But up until 20 minutes ago or so, I had just thought about, I was going to come here and give a quick thank you to the council for the past support that's been given to Parks and Recreation, and I hope this is part of the future. But if you'll indulge me just for a second, I've been with the city for, let me tell you, ten years at the end of this month. And I was just exploring that idea a little more, you know, scrupling down projects that were accomplished for Parks and Recreation. There was 10 years, and it was quite less. So if I can just quickly go through those. Resurfaced the courts at the Mayland Community Park. There's a little extension at the end of South Old Lane that included part of a bike trail that was done right when I got here. The mayor probably remembers a lot of these projects because he was on council for most of the time I was there. But Kings Row was redeveloped. Coverbridge Park was developed. Jim Hauser's Zellia Gardens was developed. There was a boardwalk connector for pedestrians that came from the Sun Rail Station. That's a great addition. There's a new playground done at Lake Lily Park. There was a playground shade put over the playground at Minnehaw Park. Beltline Park, same thing, there was a shade put over the playground. As well as the community park, we have quite a big shade structure there at the Mayland Community Park. Sandsburg Trail was developed. Fennel Street Trail. Lake Lily improvements, we put in steps down there and did a lot of improvements in the restrooms. And the Penn Square right behind me, you know, it's a central park in a lot of our events. Or Mayland improvements, Homer Huff, pavilion restroom improvements, Hill Recreation Park Playground, Minnehaw, Big Club Courts Inn. And in progress right now is the West Side Trail just on the west side of the pedestrian bridge over I-4. And there's four block projects going on, Lake Lily, in the back of Lake Lily, and the widening is being done at the community park. So as you can see, this is quite impressive list. And I know what difficult decisions you have to make. I sit through these budget discussions and project discussions like tonight. So I know there's a lot of difficult decisions that are, that you face on a daily basis. So I truly appreciate, and I hope the Mayland residents do too, the importance of Parks and Recreation. I think you understand that. And I really do appreciate the projects that have been done in that short time, in those 10 years. So thank you very much. And I guess I'll just close with, we're going to do a celebration of Parks and Recreation Month for two weeks at the community park from 9:00 to noon. There'll be several few extra family activities. We're doing face painting. We've got a few inflatables that are going on there, juggling demonstrations of bounce houses, and free classes, and a lot more. So you know, any little ones you can tag along to the park, I think they'll really have a good time that day. It's July 26th, Saturday, 9:00 into noon. So with that, I guess I'm done, but.
Jay, I just want to say there's a couple of things you forgot. You forgot about, you know, our First Fridays. I mean, movies in the park. And you know, you talked about it real quick, but connecting the west side to the east side, so now people can literally have a bike trail that we never had before, that they can ride over here. So you've done a lot in these 10 years. And people don't know, I think, I don't know how we snagged it, but we got, he came over from Winter Garden, and it's been one of the greatest things. And you've worked hard. So thank you, Jay. Thanks for everything.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's get back to business. We have all business. Mark, anything in all business report?
No, sir.
Okay. We have our own city council consent agenda then. Does anybody in the council want to remove any of the items on consent agenda? Okay, does anybody in the public have any comments on consent agenda items two through six? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public period on that, and a motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for July 14th, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Randall?
Aye.
Mayor Lounds?
Aye.
Okay, again, this is approved. Now we are on to the public period, where anybody from the public who has anything on their line, if you'd like to discuss anything, you can come to the podium and let us hear about it. Doesn't have to be anything that's on the agenda, it's better if it's not. We have a taper. This man, who can please identify yourself?
Can I speak? Hi, I'm Stacy Larson. I am the Director of the Mayland Public Library. And I just wanted, I know there's an agenda, I'm not here for that. I wanted to bring to your attention something that is happening, and that is that Dr. Drab has stolen all of the colors from the library. It is a black and white world. I mean, even my closet is black and white. So we need help. We need help bringing the colors back into the world and into the library. And so I'm soliciting all of you, and all of you, to come to the library this weekend, help us take on Dr. Drab in his evil lab and restore color to the world. This is our annual escape room. This year, all of the puzzles will be to bring back a color. So you need to bring back all of our friends in Roy G. Viv, Restore Color. You can sign up for a slot for our escape room on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday on our website, maylandpubliclibrary.org. It is good fun for everyone 10 and up. And I would point out that if you have a lot of numbers in your age, you definitely count as and up. Please come as grownups and do the escape room. Bring your family, bring your friends. It is, it's a challenging one this year. So this is why I did say 10 and up, because the puzzles are hard, but the reward is great, color in the world and maybe not me in black and gray. It is just one of many things we are offering as part of summer reading. If you are not already tracking your reading, please do so again on our website. We have great prizes for kids. We even have good prizes for the grownups, sponsored by the Enzian, Lazy Moon Pizza, and Trader Joe's. So there's good prizes. For grownups, you just have to read five books this summer, and you can backdate them to the first of June through the end of July. So again, summer reading, come to the escape room, lots of slots still open.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Great things happening at the Mayland Public Library. Anybody else? Any public comments? Okay, let's close the public comment period, and we're on to the decisions for this evening. And first is the Mayland Public Library, Quinstrom Park Project Design Development Agency. HBM Architects Designs are here, or HBM Architecture Interior Designs here. It has a presentation. Mark, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, just real briefly. I think as we all know, the city first embarked on this project back in 2017, although we've been discussing it probably 10 years prior to that, to determine, in 2017, the question was to determine whether we should upgrade the existing library or replace it with a new facility that would better serve the residents of Mayland. In 2018, we did a facility assessment, and what came out of that was that it probably didn't make sense to repurpose the building as a library. So based upon that evaluation, the city council determined that renovation wasn't going to be on the table, and we should look to construct a new library. Following the city council request in 2020, comparative analysis was done of three city-owned sites in the downtown area, determined which would be best for a new library. The result of that study was that Quinstrom Park was the best location to serve the needs to redevelop the park and to construct a new library, right kitty corner from the fire station in 301 South Mayland Avenue. In 2022, taking the next steps, the city hired HBM Architects for the planning and design project. And I don't want to steal too much of Peter and Kevin's thunder, because they're going to go through a little bit of history of how we got to where we are today. But I would like to introduce Peter Bullock, Kevin Kennedy. We also have Robert Baez here, and Ryan Seacrest from RBI, Planning and Landscape Architecture, who've been doing the park work on this project. So to sort of bring you up to speed on where we are right now. So.
That's all. Thanks, Mark. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for your time this evening. We are at another milestone of this great project. I wanted to give you an update of the project development. And I know we have some new council members as well. So we're going to go through a little bit of the development of the project from the beginning. As Mark said, you've been all working on this for quite some time. We've been working on it for a much shorter period of time, but very excited about the progress to date. The rendering you see on the screen right now is the current rendering of the design. I will get to that and some discussion in a moment. But first, to start, the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about the process, site plan review, floor plan review, exterior review, budget review, and then next steps. As Mark mentioned, the history of the project has gone through extensive consideration, site selection, and then further kind of planning and building the program, the needs. The design that we have developed, along with you and the community, is one that blends a little bit of the architecture of your immediate area. And that has three main influences, as we had talked with people about things that were important. There is a Florida mid-century modern kind of aesthetic that is in this region, along with the Arts and Humanities, the Mayan influence that's just immediately next to the project site, and of course, this building here, the Mayland City Hall and other civic buildings. So those were the kind of the things we drew inspiration from in terms of the architectural style. Early renderings were created that have changed slightly. There's the influences of those three kind of parties of architecture I mentioned that you'll see consistent from that initial design. But the original design had an entrance more off of Mayland Avenue, off of the east side of the building. And these early bubble diagrams you see here depicted that. The red triangle there on the slide on the left is the entry that was proposed at that time. The building was initially developed as a two-story building, and it still today is a two-story structure anchoring the northeast corner of the park. And we got involved with community engagement in June of 2023, pre-significant engagement, fun engagement that drew out a lot of people, a lot of comments, a lot of influence and thought, went through considerations of what would make a really great library, both from a functional standpoint and from an aesthetic standpoint, that really felt like Mayland. And so those activities went through a series of different components. We had what we called a mind-breaking process. And that was a process where we would just share images of what was happening in libraries today all over the country, and ask people to give us their feedback. What do you think about these things that are happening in libraries? Does it feel right for Mayland, or does it not? We did what we call a building making, which was actually a hands-on activity, where everyone that attended had the opportunity to lay out the building on the site, position it on the site, consider approach to the building, connections of the building to the site, to the neighboring components, and then also develop some interior relationships, some plans for the both floors that those small groups talked a lot about how they would see a library operating today in a 21st century environment. We also did a lot of online survey capture, which really brought a lot of really great comments to the design team. And then working with our extended committee and the city folks and the library folks, extending that to staff surveys as well. So again, I think the process has been very robust in the sense to generate a very functional and a very welcoming and inviting library. There was a couple of presentations along the way of the process and the development of the design that was very important. This was a snapshot from January. I think this was the transition period from the early initial design phases to really getting into the details of the project, which we called a Phase One. And this is an image that is on the west side of the building. This is after influence that we had received from community engagement about the entry perhaps being better suited to the west side of the building than the east side of the building. Our team members from RBI are here today. A big part of the project involves Quinstrom Park and how we would enrich that environment to be a really great destination, again anchored with the library on Packwood and Mayland Avenue. And one of the big objectives of the design was to have that library piece as an anchor. If you came in off of Packwood, you'd cycle through the library, and there'd be an access point to the north to, or the south to the park area. I'm going to talk about the park in the later renderings, which is the current. But at this point in time, we really focused on reconfiguring the parking and the site, and developed these renderings, again, which were really vetted carefully through discussions with city council, community, and the city and the library. Continuing through the process, we developed additional floor diagrams, bubble diagrams that located the space. Again, I'm not going to talk too much about these early ones, because we've moved on in a very progressive way that took a lot of input from everyone to get to where we are today. At design development, beginning of design development, we start to see the essence of the renderings for this project that are essentially pretty close to what you'll see as our final concept today. The park was developed a little bit more detail, defining elements. One of the major considerations and discussions at this stage was how to be a really good neighbor to the City Hall, Packwood Avenue, Mayland Avenue intersection, and then Arts and History, and particularly the use of the park for both entities benefit. And so there was some tightening of the parking that happens on the east, or the west side, and a contiguous space from the library to the park, and also from the Jermaine Marble Building to the park. We also developed the idea of some connective pathways from those two entities to promote a more contiguous and collaborative use of the space. So at this point, the design development drawings, the plan, focused on, again, two floors. We have on the first floor, primarily developed for children's services and meeting space with support services, staff support services, and the book sale, friend's book sale. On the second floor is the primary area for adult collection, has the teen area and additional support staff space, and then some fun aspects of additional library program spaces for maker space and classroom space for community that would use and reserve different types of meeting space, much like the senior center was doing and will continue to do here. So our current design, as I mentioned, is, looks very similar to from where we began. The park has changed a little bit. It's been really developed along the lines. Early on, it was a big idea and focused on the civic, civil aspects of the park. As we've got to the design development, we really honed in on some very careful considerations of the difference of use of space in the park. Real quickly, on the northeast quadrant is the library building. To the west is the parking area that you see. To the east, item B is going to be a children's garden, a space that's directly accessed off of the children's space inside the building for program extensions. G, which is the area to the north of the building, sorry, to the south of the building, is a very large lawn for a lot of different type of activities. Item H is a connected lawn that will come along to the west and connect into another lawn labeled G that's by the Jermaine Marble Building. There will be connective pathways through the site with contemplative and sitting seating areas and play areas, and then extending all the way to the south to another small satellite parking area that was developed through discussion off of Ventress Avenue for park use. The building's plan essentially remains the same in terms of children's area of program space in the blue color here, or the darker blue, program room for children's activities, and then a large meeting room that's subdividable into two smaller rooms if needed, or one large room for major events. There's some seating area, a very nice display wall of art and new material and books and popular material. There are two entrances to the building, one again from the west parking lot here, and then one from Packwood Avenue on the north. And then there are two access points within the building to get to the second floor, which again is primarily the adult collection, teen, maker space, classroom space, multiple small group study spaces, and then a very nice feature that wraps the south and east edge of the building, which is an outdoor balcony for reading and extended programming space, use space. And so the renderings, again, this is from the west, looking at the entry of the, basically more the southwest view of the building. This is the south view of the building that would link from the building to the park. This is the south view of the building that would link from the building to the park. This is the east end of the building, and this is the space that is defined as the children's outdoor garden space. And then the intersection of Maitland and Packwood, this is the civic kind of approach from across the street and the entry, which is on the north side of the building. And that's what you see here, the direct north spacing entry. The thing that we're very happy to report today, a lot looks very similar to what you've seen in the development up to this point. And in addition to that, we are very happy to say we are on budget or under budget, slightly under budget of our targeted $16 million construction budget at $15.8 million. And next steps, and happy to answer any questions or discussion this evening that you might have, but our next steps would be after the presentation this evening, we have between now and January, complete our construction documents. So still a lot of work to do in terms of detailing and coordinating all the trades and the different components going into the building. In January through April would be a bid period permitting, again, council approval when we would bring the GMP, guaranteed maximum price, for approval, and then anticipation of an April 2026 construction start. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail that you might like.
Okay. Thank you for that very thorough presentation. It all looked very good. Does anybody have any further questions, comments?
On the landscape plan, it's a pretty extensive plan. And I know our Assistant Public Works Director is a landscape architect. Has he reviewed the plan yet? So, and the reason I bring it up is, you know, certainly one of our tasks is not to saddle a future council of commitments that are maybe out of budget or more budget. This is a very intensive landscape that's going to require a lot of maintenance. And so my concern is what that maintenance cost is going to be in the future. You know, this is a kind of a passive park that's neglected today, mowed occasionally, but in the future, you're going to have a lot of planting beds, you're going to have a standard that I think our residents are going to expect there. So there's going to have to be some dedication of dollars there to make sure it's maintained to that level. I know the existing library is smaller, doesn't have as much landscape component, but this is going to be a lot more intensive, probably more intensive than Community Park, probably more intensive than Independence Park, Mini Hop Park, all of them combined. So I just want to make sure we're thinking about how to make this a cost-effective landscape that's going to happen to be maintained.
Well, Bill, you're a landscape architect, so you Well, I'm not. You're into one, so.
You have access to landscape.
Is there anything in particular, I mean, I think we, there was, the prior views of it, it was more intensive.
Yep.
And it seems to have stepped back a little from that, but is there anything here that gives you particular concern?
I think the number of planting beds, I mean, with planting beds, I'm not sure, there's not quantities identified at this point in the design development plan, but certainly planting beds translate to future weeds. You're going to have a lot of people out there weeding this. The front plaza is very intense. And again, this is going to be the entry point, and I think our residents and the people that have supported the library are going to want to see it maintained the way it's presented from day one, when it's open. And that's just going to, you know, create a lot of maintenance on the landscape side of it. I'm not enamored with three, kind of four-person picnic benches on the plaza. I'm not sure why that's proposed as part of the hardscape. They have the three areas in the back. The other thing I really want to make sure that we're taking care of is CEPTED principles, especially in the children's play area. We want to make sure that, you know, everybody can be seen and there's visibility in all aspects. And I know, Ryan, you're probably looking at a lot of that, but, and I think we have some police officers that are certified in CEPTED, so just make sure that, you know, we apply those principles here as well.
Sure. And just to add a bit of clarification, like I stated in my correspondence to you, the plan development is iterative and moving forward very quickly, so the plan set you saw is a little bit older. Chris Kennedy had some of those very same comments, and so Ryan and Robert are working on rescaling the plan to accommodate that. So those are, those comments right along the same line that Chris had.
That's good to know.
I thought those were being, those were fantastic thoughts and some things I didn't even think of, so great.
My question is, Jay, would that have like a small slope to it at all for any water retention?
That is the area in which that we proposed for retention.
Okay. I know before it was more like a bowl kind of.
Correct.
Is it still, is it still deep like that, or is it, are we looking more of like?
It's a very slight.
Slight?
Yeah. And if I may, I just go back to the prior council members' comments. I think it was a very good question, as Mark mentioned, all those comments we did take in consideration, and we did really scale this back, both from an economic standpoint and then a maintainable and efficient standpoint. And I think that some of the areas where there are some of the more intentional plantings are more like the children's garden or reading garden, or really areas that are really pinpointed. So we're going to continue to look at maintainability of those areas. Also, the part of the benches you mentioned, those are outside on the northeast corner of the building is located the major meeting room, and we think that that small quadrant of that plaza would be utilized for breakout space or activities from the meeting environment. So we haven't finished, really getting started with our furnishing selections, so some of these things are just placeholders, and they'll evolve too with a real particular appropriate functional use for them as we advance.
To follow up, I know in some of the past meetings I attended, one of the major issues was the book drop-off. And looking at that, it still bothers me a little bit. I don't know if Stacy has looked at it in detail, but if I'm coming in there, you know, typically I would think the driver's the one that's dropping the book into it. And where it's placed right now, you would have to cross over the parking lot aisle to where it's at in order to do that. And I'm not sure if that can be redesigned where you have a method of keeping people outside the travel lanes while dropping off the book, but also making sure that it's the not opposing lane.
Well, I think the intent is that it is a circulation pattern that comes in and cycles around the site, and that point of drop-off is the left lane of that directional travel so that the driver is at the book drop, and a car can pass by that as well, and then cycle around.
So this is going to be a one-way?
Yes.
In and out?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, but it's important too, if somebody's there for a while maneuvering their books in, you're not causing a backup, so there's, there is two lanes going that direction somebody can continue through.
I'd like to see arrows on that side plan showing that it's a one-way in and out. I think that's going to be important, because I, looking at the plan, I didn't get that.
Okay.
I thought the travel aisle was about 22 feet
Right.
Two-way direction.
Anything else?
I wanted to ask about the railroad. Is there some sort of a barrier other than the trees as a kind of, you know, marker of a boundary? Is there a safety barrier or anything like that?
Yeah, we are doing a fence that we haven't yet detailed around the children's garden area that will be the first line of barrier, and then there will be additional plantings. But it isn't much different than what, Ryan, you were involved with here in the park, right?
Sure, yeah. So, yes, the detail around the children's garden, we'll have a fence similar to the detail you see out here in the park separating. We did, however, in the park, you'll see today, there's no fence out there, it's just landscape. And in the VE process, we did identify that fence, and it was discussed with staff here in the city that that fence could perhaps be removed along the edge of the park that is not the children's area essentially, and maintain some of the landscape that's there today, in addition to supplementing some of that to fill it in, to put a more natural barrier. So that's where we are today.
Let's open it up for the public. Does anybody in the public want to talk about this? A lot of people here from the library. Please come on up, please don't be shy, nobody wants to. Any takers?
They don't look like, they're very excited.
Very excited about this.
I have a question. Will there be lighting in the park here again? Is clothing sunset, or will there be lighting? Is it useful in the evenings?
For the record, because they can't hear you, you're recording as well, so I'll just repeat your question and just want to put that. She, a member of the audience asked whether there'd be lighting, and I think we'll get an answer here.
Yes. Yeah, I think the intent is the, as mentioned too, the safety of the site and the library building itself will be very carefully considered. I think, I don't know if we've actually talked through this whole discussion, but I believe the park's going to be open. I don't know if there's any restriction the city might put on that says park closes at dusk, but I believe that the library intends to have functions in the evening out there. And, but, but lighting is a part of the major development of the entire site.
And the lighting will be dark skies lighting where we're shooting it straight down?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Have any comment, question, ask time? Okay, well, let's close the public comment period, and we're here to, I think, either approve or not approve the design base as it is, and such you support to go do more work. Does anybody have a motion or any further discussion?
I know that you had a couple things you wanted to see, so if you wanted to form a motion and add in those arrows and the other things.
I took notes here, so we're.
So we're good?
Yeah.
We don't need to do that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Then I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the Maitland Public Library Quinstrong Park Project Development Phase HBMH Architecture, Interior, Landscaping and Architecture. Sorry, I didn't have it written on there.
And direct staff to move on, direct from the running phase?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay. And that was your second, right? Okay, if you have a motion and a second, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Randolph?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember Branch?
Aye.
Mayor Mounds?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you for coming all the way from Ohio again. Good to see you again, and we're really excited about the presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I hope you get to enjoy some recreation during July.
Yeah, definitely. Enjoy the real.
Been here many times.
Okay, we have, our next item is a decision about a second reading of the ordinance amending the land, or the land development code. Michelle, would you please read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number 1445, the ordinance of the City of the Maitland Board on the New Land Development Code, Article 5, Development Standards Section 5.2.4, general parking restrictions related to parking trailers and recreational equipment providing for codification of the board's general voting.
Okay, thank you. And Mark, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, just real quickly, as we talked about last meeting, staff has identified the need to clarify the intent and implementation methods for standards for the parking of major recreational vehicles such as boats, utility trailers in our residential areas of the city. During the drafting and adoption of the updated Land Development Code in 2022, certain aspects of the recreational equipment parking code were reworded and some sections were omitted that sort of changed the meaning of the code, required some interpretation. Major recreational vehicle equipment, utility trailers have typically been allowed and permitted to be parked in residential zone districts if they meet one of several standards. For boats weighing in excess of 200 pounds, they can be parked in the residential zones. If they're parked on a trailer or on a paved or hard-packed driveway, at least 15 feet from the edge of pavement. What we have done, based upon some concerns that were brought up through the code enforcement process, is added some definitions on what that hard-packed surface is and what a loose surface is, so that clarification has been added in here to aid in the implementation of this as we move forward. On June 5th, Plankas only commission reviewed this ordinance and voted unanimously to recommend approval, and that is our recommendation tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any questions on this ordinance? All right. Does anybody in the public have any comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, let's close the public comment period, and anyone who wants to discuss any further, we could do that, or the motion is being ordered?
I will make a proper motion this time, and move to approve ordinance number 1445, amending the land development code, Article 5, Development Standards, Section 5.2.4, general parking and loading area standards on second reading.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Michelle, please call the roll.
Councilmember Branch?
Aye.
Councilmember Randolph?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Mayor Mounds?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved on second reading. So now we're moving on to a first reading of ordinance number 1441. Michelle, would you please read that title?
Ordinance number 1441, and the ordinance of the City of Maitland Board on the General Codification of the Code of Ordinances, as supplemented and revised from time to time, providing for the codification of the general and permanent ordinances of the City of Maitland, that have been adopted by the Maitland City Council on the 4th of November, 2024, providing for appeal of certain ordinances non-impeded herein, providing a penalty for violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Mark, would you like to introduce this item for us?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Section 2.16 of the city's charter, general codification of all ordinances of which have been specified by the city council, which is adopted by the city council for inclusion in the code, should be done every 10 years. The current code was originally adopted in 1981, recodified in 1993, and then again in 2000. In April of 2022, the city contracted with Musical Co. Corporation to do the next round of codification. As you see from the staff report, what we do when we do a codification, we identify conflicts or inconsistencies, take a look at obsolete provisions, or if there's any conflicts with new Florida statutes, we revise the code in those manners. We look for anything that's conflicting within the code to revise that, and if there's anything unconstitutional, we take care of that. So we've had every department that has regulations within the code of ordinances look at this, went to the musical corporations, attorneys to have them identify those three areas where they would recommend changes, which there really weren't that many, although there were some preemptions, as we know, from the state we had to address, but there weren't that, that many of those conflicts. Then it was mainly just updating everything else, so between public works, police, fire, community development, looking for the four major departments, and obviously administration with clerk's office that took a look at this over the last couple of years, to come up with the code, in addition to adding all those ordinances that have been adopted since 2000, March of 2000. So that comes into one big package, which is our new code, which was too big to put in the packet, so we sent you the link for it. So I hope you enjoyed that reading. But I assure you that we've gone over this over and over again with fine toothed gum. We're very comfortable with the fact that we're in a good place with, with this version of the codification. So staff have recommended city council adopt on first reading ordinance 1441, adopting the new general codification of the code of ordinances. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions, Mark?
I just want to know if that reading of that codification, 500-plus pages constitute a book for my reading list? a book for my reading list?
Yeah.
Let me see, who needs it for you?
Anybody else? In the public, would you like to talk about the codification of the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, let's close the public comment period, and there's no further discussion of the motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion on the first reading of ordinance 1441, adopting the new general codification of the code of ordinances.
Okay, would you like a motion?
I'll second.
Yes, second. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Randolph?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Mayor Mounds?
Aye.
Okay, we have approved that on first reading. Now we're on to the first reading of ordinance number 1447. Michelle, would you please read that?
Ordinance number 1447, the ordinance of the City of Mayland, Florida, amending the city charter, Sections 8.03(c), runoff city election, and 8.04, candidate qualifying, modifying the runoff election date and qualifying period in 2026, general municipal election, and in each subsequent year except for those years that are before the four, to a date period that is in harmony with the supervisor of elections and in compliance with Florida statutes, providing for separability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Mark, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, sir. At the last Orange County Supervisor of Elections meeting, the one that was held in May, certain conflicts were presented between the runoff election date and candidate qualifying period for our next general election, which is in March of 2026. Supervisor of Election expressed that it wasn't feasible to hold a runoff city election four weeks after the general election, per our charter, Section 803(c). Due to procedural timeframes, deadlines, and statutory requirements that have changed over the last couple of years, as you know, the legislature has been modifying our election laws virtually every year for the last couple of years, so there's been some conflicts that have been identified. In Chapters 97 through 106 of Florida Election Code, they govern the conduct of municipal elections. They state that we can't have a charter or ordinance adopted that's in conflict or exempts municipality from any provisions expressly applying to municipalities within that election code. So these have been identified as being in conflict. In Section 100.3605 and Chapter 166 of Florida Statute, they do provide sufficient authority for us to amend the charter by ordinance when it comes to these election laws. We've done that in the past. So what Lori is proposing is instead of having the, the hard day, date deadlines within our charter for qualifying and for runoff, that we add language that on an annual basis will coordinate with Supervisor of Elections Office, establish those schedules by resolution. Once those are established by resolution, to make sure the Supervisor of Elections can run the elections for us, then those will be put into the candidate handbooks, so every year we'll establish those deadlines. So in the future, it saves us from sort of guessing of what the best dates are, so we just establish those every year, publish those every year, get them adopted by resolution, so candidates understand what the parameters are on a year-by-year basis. So it seems the best thing to do to clean it up once and for all versus, like I said, playing a guessing game on whether we should do 50 days or 45 days or 60 days prior to, to the election for, for qualifying. So that's our recommendation. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I didn't ask this, but I'd just take it as such that all the other cities are jumping on board with the, going in the same direction with this?
Don't know.
Don't know?
No, can't answer that. I can find out for a second.
Oh, I just wonder. Okay, if you do.
Mayor?
Yeah?
So having said on the two prior charter new commissions, I think going forward, because our commission really looked at it from the inward side of what Maitland does, without really referencing Orange County and the other things that have outside influence on us. So I think going forward, the next commission should be instructed that they, we have to look at some of that stuff, how it impacts, because again, we, we kind of were in a vacuum looking at this is how we want to do our elections, this is what it is, not really looking at what are the logistics that Orange County has to go through in order to provide it to us, because it's not run by ourselves, it's run by the Supervisor of Elections when we do this. So that would be my comment is going forward. And I guess with that said, so we were allowed to modify this. I know the other items that we suggested to the council back then were put to a public vote. Is this one that's outside that, it's just a modification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a good point, though, yes. Anybody else? It doesn't push back, you know, into mid-November, you know, the, you know, people are filing in mid-November for the election, the following March, so there's a long, long lead title on this. We're a small city, it's kind of, these people.
I will say it's pretty tight when you file in January.
Yeah.
That doesn't leave much time.
No, you have four or five weeks to get everything done, so I, I'm planning a campaign, and I'm with you, if you have that time to, you know, to get your materials and really get out there, because you really don't have enough time to.
One of the bigger complaints we've heard, I think most of you experienced this, is just getting your campaign account open.
Yeah.
It's just so bad that you take a long time, and banks aren't used to dealing with those temporary campaign requests.
Yeah, that's a nightmare, for sure.
Okay. Does anybody in the public have any comment on this item? This ordinance to modify our runoff election date. Okay, seeing none, let's close the public comment period, and there's no further discussion of the motion would be in order.
I'll make the motion for the first reading of ordinance 1447, amending Section 8.03 for the CC, runoff election date, and 8.04 qualifying of the Maitland City Charter. Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Randolph?
Aye.
Mayor Mounds?
Aye.
Okay, we have gotten through our business for this evening, and I would like to say how flawlessly the Assistant City Clerk, Michelle Concurdy, thank you for sitting here today with us. You had one of your first.
Awesome job.
You had four ordinances.
I know, thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Explain that one.
Yeah. All right. Okay, reports. Mr. City Attorney, anything?
Briefly, the first thing is, I assume by now you guys have heard about the impacts of SB 180 on the ability of the city to regulate development, but in case you haven't, that here are some of the highlights. Again, I, it's hard to put into words my admiration for how Tallahassee finds ways to tell us how to do what we do. This in particular says that if you were within 100 miles of a hurricane in the last year, you can't have any regulations or enforce any regulations or change any regulations that would make it harder to develop in any way, shape, or form. And of course, this has some significant implications. For example, we, we don't know how it's going to be litigated out, but if you raise your impact fees for that, be one of those regulations that you can't change. And if you did that, that requires you to have to pay fines, potentially be booted out of office, and those are the things they like to throw in. I don't know the answer. I just know that as an example, one of the things you definitely can't do is you can't have a moratorium. So if there was an issue that came up where we needed further study, that would be just too bad for us. And I would love to tell you there's hope, that it'll get better before it gets worse, but I'm not seeing that. And so I thought I would mention it, because if you're not familiar, there will be times or could be, we're kind of a built-up city for the most part, but if someone wants, comes along with a redevelopment project or something along those lines, we can't do anything, and we can't enforce anything that would make it harder for them to do it in any way, shape, or form. So that's, that's the news from Tallahassee. What's one other thing, but I forgot, but whatever it is, I'm sure I'll remember it until I know it.
So you can't change your density, you can't change your height?
If it makes it harder for them to develop, the answer is no, you can't do it.
Okay. That's all in perception.
Quick question. Within 100 miles.
Of a hurricane.
From what period to what period?
It is, I think it was supposed to be within, it's retroactive. If you've adopted something within the last, I don't know how many years, I have to go back and look at it, that makes it harder, and you were within the 100 miles of a hurricane within the last, I want to say it's the last year, those regulations you have adopted that make it harder for them to redevelop or build back, or whatever you want to say, or develop are not enforceable.
How long, does that continue forever?
I will send you, I'm not sure if the league of cities have put out a memo, many have put out a memo, say, hey, heads up, don't, don't do this, or else you're going to have a problem. And so I'll, I'll send you out the information. Right now, we're in a sort of fortunate place, we don't have a ton of development coming through on a weekly basis, but other cities definitely do have this issue.
Is 100 miles of what we like to, hurricane force winds work, or?
Well, that's the thing, is that, is that there are many topics that are to be litigated. One is what you say, where they made landfall, but it's also where it has, where it has impacts as a hurricane. So if it started as a, as a, as a three, and by the time it made it up to, for example, the Big Bend area, it was a one, it's still everywhere. At the end of the day, I'm not sure if you're saying we're in the state that isn't impacted by SB 180. That's what it will have done.
All right. All right, Mr. City Manager, anything?
Yeah, so a little bit of good news, bad news upfront. We were successful again this year for, I believe, the fourth year running in getting our legislative appropriations that we put in for. So we had nearly $100,000 to help fund a roof replacement at police station, and got a half million dollars to help with funding of the traffic signal replacement at Maitland Avenue and Horatio, to put a mastarm in there, so. So that's certainly good news. On the bad news front, we were granted a half million dollars to assist with the cost of construction of the library, but none of the library grants were funded in the budget this year, so made it through the administrative process, did not make it through the legislative process. And over the weekend, we received a letter, which we did anticipate, from the Governor's Office of Doge, asking for extensive information about our budget and our finances and how we run things here. We are not alone, it appears, everyone in the state receives that, so they gave us their very generous deadline of one week to pull together all of the financial information we have and more, in some of the vaguest of terms that we're trying to decipher. Shannon's been working on that all day today, and I'll take her through the end of the week to meet their deadline to get that to them, so here we go.
So we had to stop everything we were doing as a city to, to do this.
Okay. I agree. Great thing to tell that.
Yeah.
Everybody else, City Council, how many, any like?
So what did you do on your vacation? Well, I visited the grave of Captain.
That was awesome.
Captain Lee.
You did a vacation.
Oh, okay. The namesake of our town. But he, where is his grave? It was in New York, Beaufort, South Carolina, at the National Cemetery. So when he wound up leaving here, mortally wounded, he went on convalescent leave to Charleston on his way north, that's as far as he got. He applied for a second convalescent leave. The surgeon certified he was not ready to go back to service. Somewhere in there, he wound up overboard, drowning in Charleston Harbor. They buried him there in 1837, dug his grave up around 1912, and reburied it at the new National Cemetery in Beaufort, South Carolina. So I stopped there because, you know, I wanted to see his grave site, and, you know, he is an 1820 graduate of military academy. They just started in 1803, so he was a career soldier, never married, died at about the age of 40. And the cemetery has no information on him other than the marker and the grave site. And so I was letting them know that he was our, you know, namesake for our town, so I'm going to do, they have the Veterans Legacy Program right now that's going on, where, you know, the VA's trying to record a lot of documentation on different soldiers that have served over the years. And so the cemetery director there, and I had a long conversation about that, that I'm going to provide him some information. Because they have a little booklet in the self-guided tour, as well as they do guided tours, there are two, of the famous people that are buried there. This is a Civil War cemetery when they started it. And so he goes, this might make it into the book, he might be one of our famous people. A city's named after him.
Did you get a picture of yourself with the Maitland?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Would you be kind enough to share that?
Of course. Of course.
That's a good question. Does it need to be circulated through the city to be sent to us?
I'll, I'll send it tomorrow, and that way he can circulate it there.
I think it would be a great, you know, Maitland news.
I'd love to have it, yeah. I would share it.
Yeah.
I will say, we've done a lot with the Veterans Legacy Program at UCF, and we work at the St. Augustine Cemetery, and lock on the Seminole War Veterans there, and may have some material, I know we did some material about Maitland, so we'll contribute that to your.
Well, I know Dr. Hannah from Rollins College did a book about Maitland in 18, or 1936, and he did extensive research, and since then, there's a full three site that I got some information from too. In fact, I got the letters that he wrote to his commander and the servant's report of that, so.
I might, the head of Plan Maitland sent them your way, I'll say that might be a nice piece for their newsletter or something to do right up.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's unfortunate, and my brother-in-law does this up in Seattle, they have several funeral homes, where they've gone in and looked at remains and researched them, that nobody claimed, defined veterans, and then they, and turned them into national cemeteries with full military honors. So there's a lot of veterans that are out here that have been forgotten, that didn't have family or whatever, so. And he never married, I mean, he was a career soldier, so. So they will know who he is in the future. And the funniest thing is, I'm sitting there talking to one of the funeral directors, and there are temporary quarters in, in the back office, there was a young lady who had been in the Army, and she goes, Maitland, Florida? I said, yeah. She goes, oh, I went to Bethune-Cookman, we used to go down to Maitland and Eatonville. She goes, that's who he is? I go, yeah. So here's a person that works there that had no idea who he was.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes?
I did remember, and it would be good news. I won't hang on this long. My, my children apparently have figured out that we did such a good job with grandchild number one, that my oldest is now expecting grandchild number two on December 25th.
Wow, that is.
And it's a boy, so if everything goes as planned, I will have two grandchildren by Christmas.
Awesome, nice. Great news.
I didn't forget that.
I had to get that on the record.
Yeah, I didn't forget that.
Okay, and Madam City Clerk, anything?
I got nothing.
Oh, I just want to say real quick before we close up, I'm excited to see the new signs coming out. I know it's been years in the making. I really think it's, I mean, it's going to bring value to us, so when you come into Maitland now and you see these beautiful signs, it's really going to say something about us, you know? When I was in hotels, the, the most important thing was your sign and your presence coming in, because that said everything about you as a hotel. And the same thing as a city, when you come in and you see these beautiful signs and everything, it's really going to tell, it's going to start the story of what we are as a community.
And there's a great little connection in the 20s, Chamber of Commerce and the Maitland News have stories about when they put the first markers up, saying, welcome to ye olde Maitland. You've probably seen the, I'm sure there's some.
More access, yeah.
Yeah, so the first attempts to sort of brand Maitland, and that's from the, from the 1920s, and you could do some really interesting things with visually, show those early efforts to sort of mark the entries, so I think that's great. I'd love to see, I also thought that was really cool to see.
Yeah. And I will say this, I, I would hate to sit with these three people and let you all talk history, I would be so lost. You guys would.
I know. As mayor here.
All right, yes, that's, we should, well, I guess, we'll discuss history. All right, I think that's it for the evening. That's a very.